Welcome to Thinking Green. I'm Rana and you all know, I'm sure, that Election Day is November 2nd, exactly two weeks from today. And on Election Day, the polls will be open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. In New London, the three voting places are New London High School, Harper School, and Nathan Hale School. And for people who don't register to vote by October 26th, which is the regular cutoff date, there is Election Day registration and you can go to City Hall and register and vote all in one fell swoop, although I'd recommend you get there before 5 minutes to 8. So my guest tonight, since we are really on Thinking Green still in campaign mode, is Dr. Justin Paglino. And Justin ran for Congress last year in the 3rd Congressional District. That's Rosa DeLoro's district. And is running for local office in Guilford this year. So, welcome, Justin.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And I guess the first thing I was going to ask you is, like, 2 years ago, you probably weren't thinking at all that you'd be, you know, a candidate for federal or local office come today.
True.
So what happened in that period of time that shifted your mind?
Well, that's, you know, it is an interesting story. I think I've always been interested in politics and an activist. I've gone to, I go to marches, I go to rallies, you know, I read the news every day. And, you know, like a lot of people, I'm engaged in politics, but I've always felt the urge to be an activist, whatever that means as well, to try and, you know, push, push a little harder than just with my vote. You know, I think it's very important to make an informed decision when you vote, but it's also, I think, you know, a lot of us feel the need to do something more and to get more involved. And whether it's just writing a letter to the editor or writing to your representative. But at some point, I felt like, well, the idea occurred to me that running for office is another form of activism that's even more powerful because when you run for office, you really get noticed, your voice gets listened to, and your opinion has a better chance, I think, of really being heard. I mean, here I am, I'm getting to talk on a--
You'll be on YouTube tomorrow, so, you know, hundreds or thousands of people can hear you. And I know that from my own experience, the press seeks you out and you do really get a platform to get views heard by a much bigger audience than just as a citizen.
It makes an enormous difference. You know, I've been, done a lot of things as an activist, you know, and they can have, they can be effective, but I rarely, but I feel like kind of a small part of a large movement and I rarely get the media in particular to be interested in really hearing exactly what I have to say or talk to me on TV or interview me for the newspaper. And all of that happened in 2020. And so, you know, what happened in 2020 also was that I decided to leave the Democratic Party and I just came to a conclusion that the two-party system was not a good system. I realized that there's a way out of it, particularly with ranked choice voting and proportional representation. And I imagined, you know, this would be a better system where we had, we can talk about that more later, but I realized that we need a system where you can go into the voting booth and not just vote against the greater evil, right, but just vote for what you want. I mean, if we can't even do that, then there's something wrong with our system. And not everyone fits into two boxes. It just doesn't make sense. It's not logical and it's not representative. So I decided, you know, I was gonna give up on two-party system and put my, my vote of registration, where my heart is, and, which has always been more with the Green Party, which supports, for example, Medicare for All, which is not in the Democratic Party platform. Or, you know, you know, more aggressive measures for climate change, which, you know, are much stronger than those in the Democratic Party platform. And things such as a jobs guarantee and economic measures that are more aggressive for creating more economic justice. And a greater, stronger platform for pulling back in our military overreach, what I would call military overreach. So there's just, so I've always wanted to be in the Green Party, but, you know, it's, it's, there's this old dilemma, oh, what if, you know, what if we can't win and, you know, this spoiler effect and all these problems? And a lot of people, I think, worry about that. We can talk more about the solutions to that.
Yeah, I actually was a registered Democrat for 30 years, from age 24. I actually didn't register to vote until I was 24 because the age of registration was 21 when I was 18. And when I turned 21, I lived out of the country and didn't come back until I was like 23 and a half. So I registered in time for the first election that I got to vote in, in 1974.
Yeah.
But, but then, but, so I was a Democrat for, for 30 years, but sometimes there's just something that gives you a push that, you know, in Connecticut, we do have to give up, like, voting in the primaries, which sometimes can be very frustrating.
Yeah, and in 2020, you know, I was following Bernie and I think when he, it's very frustrating for voters, Bernie supporters in Connecticut, who, who are waiting for our turn to vote for Bernie. And by the time the primary, Democratic primary gets to us, it's over, he's out.
Oh, yeah, it was all, our primary turned out to be deferred till August. And it really felt as though the Democrats in Connecticut didn't have much, much to vote for.
It's one, it's one more way in which you can feel like your voice is being excluded because it is.
Well, you know, when you, I must admit, when I, you know, left the Democratic Party, I just changed my registration and walked home. But when you left the Democratic Party, you, like, went on the road and collected signatures to petition. So, so in 2020, you ran against Rosa DeLoro and we did, the Green Party did not have the ballot line. So what was that experience like?
Well, that was quite an experience. It was a lot harder than I thought it was gonna be. I had to gather over 2,000 signatures and they had to be, they didn't have to be from specific kinds of voters. It could be any registered voter in the district. But I found out that 2,000 signatures is quite a lot and that it really is, it takes an intensive amount of effort and time.
And you did it during a pandemic.
Yeah, there were no public gatherings, almost none. I mean, there were some, people were masked, like, there were some Black Lives Matters events that I was able to, to get some signatures at, but largely I had to go to parking lots and it was a hot summer. And, you know, like we were talking about before, I wasn't planning on doing any of this. I joined the Green Party and I joined my local chapter just to see what was going on. I do, you know, I knew that my values lied with the Green Party, but I didn't know what was going on on the ground. So I went to local chapter meeting to, before the pandemic, we were still meeting in person, to see what was going on. And then pandemic hit and I, about that time. But I found out that there was no one running for Congress in my district and my, my representative doesn't support Medicare for All. And, you know, something that really struck chord with me was when I heard Howie Hawkins on a podcast, who was the Green presidential candidate, talk, say, "If you want something, you have to vote for it." And I know that, I knew that Medicare for All was extremely popular, and we could talk about that issue, but I knew that my representative doesn't support it and so that I can't express my support for Medicare for All on the ballot and neither can anyone else in my district, which should be, according to the polls, a majority of the voters. And so I decided that that, you know, I had to be on the ballot to at least represent that issue, although there's several other issues that I felt, you know, a difference with--
I think it was Medicare, over Medicare for All that you and I met. Because I occasionally go to the meetings of your chapter, the Shoreline chapter, but I, I think about 2 years ago was when the New London was starting to work on its city council resolution to support Medicare for All. We, we decided to, we were planning now, we decided to wait till after the election because we knew that the people running 2 years ago for city council were a younger and more progressive group than the sitting city councilors. So we thought, you know, we should wait till December or January to push it. But I was going to a lot of in-person Medicare for All get-togethers. And I suspect that that's where we first met.
Perhaps, although, yeah, I do, I, I, once I joined the Green Party, I remember meeting you pretty quickly through that as well. But yeah, Medicare for All Connecticut is a great organization and that's been meeting on Zoom once a month and has, you know, grown. And, you know, there's a lot of support for this issue. And there's, there's people, there's about the estimate 68,000 people die each year for lack of healthcare in the United States because they can't afford it, which to a lot of people from other countries sounds inhumane because they don't have to worry about being able to afford healthcare. They, it's like water. You, you take it for granted that you're gonna get healthcare if you need it. And we can afford to do that. It actually saves money. It's a more cost-efficient system, not a more expensive system. So there's, all the arguments in the world are for it. But we have a, what I view as a corrupt system, a political system influenced by money. And both major political parties take enormous amounts of money from special interests, including insurance and, you know, pharmaceuticals. Green Party takes none, right? So the Green Party is an uncorrupted party and I think that's extremely important.
Now, although you're not a practicing doctor, you do have a medical background. So was that one of the reasons that you thought that you might be a good person to take this issue, you know, to the voting public in the congressional race?
Yes, I mean, I went, I went to medical school and, you know, actually a little bit, part of our training in med school and maybe in residency, I remember having, you know, we had discussions about the insurance system in the United States and, you know, it's, it's just the enormous complexity of it that's really unnecessary. And all the middlemen that each take their share and, and all the, you know, the, you know, the, the shenanigans of denying care to people if they think that they're gonna be too expensive. And, you know, some of, some of the issues were addressed with Obamacare, but, but still remain an enormous amount of uninsured people and people can't afford care.
And even insure, I, I had dental surgery about a year ago and there, I went to an office, there are 2 dental surgeons in this office and they had a full-time billing employee who does nothing but deal with payment and insurance companies. And if you think about it, like, there are 2 practitioners there and, of course, there are assistants who are, you know, helping with the actual medical care, but they have 1 whole person who is just dealing with getting paid. It's like, why does it have to be that complicated?
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's also takes a lot of time for the physicians themselves, who already feel stretched on time, that they, the physician themselves has to spend, I think, I've heard one study said an average of 9 hours a week, just talking on the, on the phone, advocating for their patients that they need the treatments that, you know, they wanna give them.
And that's really insane that the, the physicians who are trained to, you know, provide healthcare being questioned by really bureaucrats in, in the insurance companies that don't know medicine. Now, I know you are planning to run for Congress again in 2022, but, and we'll get back to healthcare, I, I think, but in the meantime, you're doing something also, again, that's, that's sort of unexpected, that you might not have anticipated a year ago, is you're running for local office.
Yes.
So tell us about what's happening in Guilford that inspired you to run for local office.
Well, yeah, it kind of gets to be a bit of a, a snowball effect, I guess. Once you get involved, you know, in politics, you know, other opportunities to try and make a difference pop up in front of you. And, you know, this, and I wasn't necessarily planning to run for local office, but I, this year's been an unusual year in Guilford. We've made national news because there has been kind of a, a insurgent group within the Republican Party, although they seem to be the dominant group within the Republican Party, that's, that has, is very singularly focused on a particular issue, which is the issue of race and racism and how it's handled in our school system and how it's discussed in our public school system. The Guilford Public Schools are run by Superintendent Paul Freeman, who in my opinion is doing an excellent job and has tried to integrate into the, the school system greater awareness of the importance of diversity, inclusion, inclusiveness. I think it's basically, it's just trying to make people feel comfortable, welcome, respected, no matter their background. And it's, doesn't seem controversial to me. And I don't think it is. I, you know, but there's a group of people who have been led to believe that this is an agenda that's linked to socialism somehow and is, and is actually teaching children to believe that they're oppressors or that white children are, should feel guilty. And I, there's no evidence of this that I've seen at all. I think it's, it's complete, it's complete nonsense. But I think a lot of people have been led to believe it's true. And, you know, I, I fault, I, I see them as being misled. I think there's a well-funded campaign to mislead, mislead people on this issue. And unfortunately, it's taken hold in Guilford and 5 individuals decided they were gonna run for Board of Education in Guilford this year on this issue. And they won at the Republican caucus, where all the Republicans came in person to vote for the, their candidates. And they won like 2 to 1, or 3 to 1 at the caucus, beating all the incumbent Republicans, who have, many of whom have served for years and have been very, you know, competent and caring and dedicated public servants. And, you know, they, they, but they got eliminated. So then, the Republican Party said, "Well, these are our candidates," but they decided not too long after they would have a primary and put the question out to a general vote in the Republicans of the town, which is their prerogative. And the, the anti-critical race theory group won again by a similarly large margin. I think it was almost 5 to 1 this time. It was just an enormous, they really had this strong backing. And it's, so that's concerning. And I, it's not just in Guilford, you know, this is happening nationwide and it's really a push, I think it's a well-moneyed push. And, you know, it doesn't really matter who's behind it exactly. I mean, I think there's the Koch Brothers involved and stuff. But, you know, that gets into another issue of media and who do we trust in the media? And where do we get our news? And are we getting unbiased news or is there unbiased news? I mean, this is, that's a huge discussion, but I feel like this is a Fox News phenomenon that people are getting riled up and really being given, misled, giving misinformation to be told, you know, "Your children are being, are being labeled as oppressors. Your children are being told to feel guilty for what their ancestors have done with slavery or with Jim Crow or with segregation." And it's, it's, it's really nothing to be afraid of at all because it's not happening. No one's saying that. I think that's really a misinterpretation of, you know, if anything's being taught in the schools, it is that, you know, that there is a history of oppression. It's not anything that, you know, it, that doesn't mean you has, as a student, have to suddenly feel burdened by it or guilty for it. It simply means that you're gonna be aware of what went on in the past. You're gonna be aware of history. And you're gonna kind of try and see that history from the perspective of the people who were being discriminated against and try to understand what that did to them. And then try to be aware as we go into the world, as you become a independent member of society, is any of this still going on? Where, you know, I, I wanna make sure that I'm able to notice it and recognize it when it's happening and not, not even unintentionally make any of it worse, which might be possible.
And Connecticut is a very segregated state, so there were forces in the past that kind of made it what it is. And I think we need to be aware. Just yesterday, I think, I listened to a webinar from the group Desegregate Connecticut about housing patterns and, and climate issues and where they intersect. And a lot of it did go into how, you know, some of these zoning rules were not good for equity and also not good for the climate. So, you know, if, if we don't have good knowledge, we can't make good decisions for the future. And to me, the push to expand what knowledge now our students come away with and see it from more perspectives and see, have a more holistic understanding of what happened is preparing them for the world that they're gonna be living in.
Yeah, and, and I think people generally have a sense that they want, that they, they care about fairness and they want things to be fair. And, but, you know, they, they, you know, they say, "Well, it shouldn't matter." You know, "We shouldn't treat people differently based on the color of their skin." And yes, that's true in the sense that, you know, people with different colored skin are equally deserving of rights. But if you don't see the phenomenon in front of you that people with different colored skin are being treated differently, you don't recognize that as being the case, which in many times it still is unfortunately, then, then you're blinding yourself to reality. So I think that's a, a difference between--
Now, now I have a Guilford ballot in front of me and I will put it up on camera in just a couple minutes. But I see that there are 5 Republican candidates for the Board of Education and no other party of your line has a, a full slate. So what, I mean, we can talk about the other offices as well, but I have to admit, I looked at the ballot and I couldn't really figure out what was going on. Here's the Board of Education race. So there are 2 Democrats. Who, are they both incumbents?
So, yes, they are. And so this is difficult to explain, but I'll try and do my best. So the Board of Education is, has staggered elections. So not every, not every member of the Board of Education is up for election this year. This year, it's, there's 5 seats that are up for election, okay? So the way the ballot is formatted is you see you have, it says "Vote for up to 5." So in this area, this Board of Education area, you look at all the names down in that big rectangle and you pick 5 that you want to be the 5 candidates to fill the 5 open seats. That's the structure of the ballot. I'm not sure it's the best possible structure, but that's the ballot we're working with. And so traditionally, what happens, what you see on a, on our ballot, and I suspect a lot of town ballots, is 5 names. So typically, it says, you know, "Pick any 5." You know, many years that I voted in the town election, it just says, "Pick any 5," and there's 5 names. So you feel a little silly. You just go in and say, "Okay, well, I'll pick the 5 that are there."
Yeah, unless there's one you really don't want or someone great who's a write-in or something. Yeah, you're right, there's no competition there.
There's often a lack of competition. And that's, I think that's, that's not ideal. It doesn't, you know, people should have choices. And it's difficult to run for office. It takes some, you know, you need time. A lot of people are stretched thin to even have the, have it be able to fit that into their schedule to do this public service. But it's such, we need more people to do it. I'm trying to lead by example, in part by doing it. But I'm lucky to have the time available and not everyone does. But, so yeah, so it's "Pick any 5." So normally what you would have seen is Row A, and then in the Republican Party, there were, there probably would have been 3 names there. And then you would, those would be the 5 names you would see. But the, the Row B is the Republican Party. And as I said, these 5 anti-critical race theory candidates won at the Republican primary. So those are the, those are the 5 individuals that, and they're, they're on the Republican Party line. And so if, if most voters went in and selected those 5 names, those 5 people would replace the 2 incumbent Democrats and the 3 incumbent Republicans that are currently sitting on the board and up for reelection.
That sounds like it could be destructive.
Well, yes, that's what it seems to be, from my perspective, that it would be destructive. They've been very, they've been, you know, some of the behavior at Board of Education meetings has been disruptive. And, you know, they're very angry. They're very angry about this, this issue. And I, I just, I just, I, I, I'm sorry, but I don't, I don't share their anger. I don't share that point of view. I don't agree with that point of view. But they're, you know, so were they to be on the Board of Education, I, I think, you know, they're very passionate about this issue and maybe they would try to, they would try to really make it an ongoing issue. And I'm not sure, in the long run, that this would really serve our town well. You know, this issue aside, I'm worried that it would, you know, take too much focus away from more, you know, I hesitate to say more important, but take attention away from other important issues that the Board of Education has to deal with.
And you're a parent also and you have kids in the school system. So there's that other dimension of concern about where the schools are going.
Yes, I have a personal investment in the quality of the Guilford Public Schools. I have a son in 10th grade and a daughter in 7th and at the high school and at Adams Middle School. And we've, feel very lucky to be where we are. We picked Guilford for geographic reasons because my wife was working at the time, was working far east in Montville and I was working in New Haven at Yale. And it was kind of, you know, kind of a compromise that we wanted to be somewhere between the 2. We used to live in Old Saybrook and then I felt I needed to be closer for, when I was doing research. But we really lucked out. I mean, it's, it's, I feel like we ended in a town with a really nice school system with dedicated public servants and teachers who really care about doing what's best for the kids. And, and I do wanna see that continue.
Now, there are 6 candidates running who are not on Line B on that Republican line. Are, you know, just, I, New Londoners probably don't need to know this, but if people from Guilford, you know, see this on YouTube, are there some that are, you know, people who definitely are, deserve, you know, people's vote, their consideration?
Well, I support the Line C candidates, which are the independent party candidates. So, so just, this can get confusing, but in Connecticut, there is an independent-- So, so just, this can get confusing, but in Connecticut, there is an Independent Party, and, which is not the same as being an unaffiliated voter. An unaffiliated voter is not affiliated with any party. But the Independent Party is a party by the name of the Independent Party. So, if you say you're independent, a lot of times, what people mean is they're not affiliated, they're unaffiliated. And technically, if you say you're an Independent Party, if you're independent, it might imply you're a member of this party.
I'm convinced that a lot of people are registered as Independent Party members, who really think that they're unaffiliated.
Yeah.
That they, it's very confusing. And Connecticut, even worse than that, has an Independents Party as well. But that one doesn't have status, official status. Yeah, so what's interesting about this ballot is that the candidates who are running as non-Democratic alternatives to the Republican candidates, are running actually on three different lines. Some are on the Independent Party line, you are on the Green Party line, and some are on their petitioning candidate line.
Yeah, well, again, this, this whole issue gets confusing, and more confusing when you bring in the other races like mine, too. But just to stay with the Board of Education, what happened was, you know, the Democrats and concerned, and anybody, everyone basically, who was concerned about these candidates being, clearly, it was clear they're going to be on the ballot. And knowing how our ballot is formatted, said, "Well, they're going to, they're going to be on the Board of Education now." Because the Democrats, Democrats can't run more candidates. They've got their two on there, they can't, they can't win more than those two seats. Because that would give them more than a bare majority on the board.
Yeah, there is a minority representation rule.
Right. And, and if there weren't for that minority representation rule, and I'm not saying it's, it's wrong, but, I mean, I like the idea of minority representation. I like the idea of proportional representation. But the way it is, is that they can't, they can't win more than those two seats. If they could, you know, Democrats outnumber Republicans in the town, probably maybe two to one. So, if, if Democrats all went in and voted Democrat, 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 you know, for five Democrats, that would be it, right?
Only two would get in.
Well, well, under the current, under the minority representation rule. If we didn't have that rule, then Democrats could just hold all the seats on all the boards, probably.
That's actually what New London is like.
Oh, really?
On City Council and Board of Ed. We have seven Democratic City Councilors, and on the Board of Ed, six Democrats, and one Republican. And at one time, a few years ago, maybe four years ago, the only, we had seven Democrats on the City Council, and six Democrats, and one Green on the Board of Ed. The Republicans were shut out. So, yeah, so that has its own problems when it comes to proportional representation, because maybe half of New London is, or slightly more than half, is registered Democrat. A lot of the city is registered unaffiliated. So, yeah, we, wherever we are in Connecticut, there are kinks to work out of the system.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the average voter like me, for years, I would go in and see this, and think, hmm, you know, what are you going to do? You shrug, and you say, "This is strange, pick five," and there's only five names. And you don't really think about it too much, but, you know, running for Congress, thinking about the two-party system, thinking about how we need to, how we can make progress by changing the system. And, and some of that is really easy. Some of that is just reformatting the ballot. The way we format our ballot has tremendous impact on, on the dynamics of an election. And it's not just a simple matter of people go vote, and for who they like best, and that, and everything turns out great. The way the ballot is formatted can be tilted this way or that way, to make it easier for certain, you know, power parties or forces to win, and for others to be squeezed out. It's kind of like gerrymandering. It's another way in which the system, the ground rules are of tremendous importance, and change the entire game. So, I have an interest in seeing a fair ballot, one that, that results in proportional representation of the variety of views that you might see in a town. And, you know, if I were on the Board of Selectmen, I'd be interested in seeing how we could possibly improve our ballot, possibly if we could institute a ranked-choice voting ballot. I, you know, I'd need to consult with some experts and see what's possible there. But to come back to this, what's happening now is, the Democrats who don't support the, or Independents who don't support these Row B candidates, they're now given these additional three candidates on Row C, that they can give their extra votes to, if they like the Democrats, and they want to vote for those two incumbents. And then they, now they have three extra votes.
So people can vote for five, and none of those are going to be the Republicans?
And none of them are going to be those Republicans. And then, one of the, in, what's happening on Row E here, is that one of the incumbent Republicans who lost on the Board of, in the, in the Republican primary, decided he, he would still like to hold office, he would still like to serve as a Republican, even though he supports the superintendent, and he's not up in arms over this issue. And he, I think he's, I don't want to misstate, but I think he's even endorsed the Democratic candidates. But I shouldn't, I may have that wrong. But so he's what's happening on Line E.
Very interesting. And so you're running for Board of Selectmen, which I know it's a little bit different, because people have fewer votes to give to that particular role.
Yeah. I was considering running, what initially got me interested in running for the local office, was this issue. And I was considering offering myself as a candidate to run for the Board of Education, who, one who would be supportive of the superintendent, and his efforts at diversity and inclusion and so forth. But it turns out, you know, that the, the, I don't know, the insiders kind of in town got together and came up with this plan, and I did all their own, through their own social networks, identified these three candidates, got the endorsement of the Independent Party, and gathered the signatures, got them all on the ballot on Row C. So I, I realized I wasn't really needed to serve in that role, and I didn't want to really upset that plan, because it sounds, it's fine with me, you know? You have those three, and you have those two, that's fine. And, you know, but I realized that maybe running for Board of Selectmen would be an interesting thing to do. Because, you know, I care about the town in general, and there were only going to be, so it's, on the Selectmen, it's pick...
Pick two.
Pick two. But there would be four names, but it would be two Democrats and two Republicans. And, you know, I thought, you know, I could throw my hat in there, because generally, I want, I want people to start thinking about democracy as being more than just a two, two-party game. I want people to start seeing candidates' names, I want the Green Party line to be on the ballot, in, on, on local ballots, so that people's, and I want to, you know, identify people in town who are interested in joining me, and helping to build the party locally. And, and if I'm, if I were elected, I could, I would be happy to serve the town, and I think that would be a great experience for me, to build my experience in this second career of politics that I've started, after now that I've left medicine and science.
Yeah, and it's interesting, one of the questions I did have written down was, you know, what potential you see your running for office at a local level would present for, like, growing a Green Party presence in town?
Well, I hope it would, could be, kind of, could kick some things off. Political parties are social. You know, I've met you now for, you know, I've known you for a couple of years, I've met a lot of other people in the Green Party. And, you know, it's been a great experience. It's, it's another community of people that I've come to feel like I'm a member of. And you kind of, you know, politics is not a solo venture. It's not something you do all by yourself. And so, you know, if, if a party's going to develop, you need to meet people, you need to develop relationships. So, you need to be active, and that has to be in town. The congressional race is great, but it is, it is difficult being such a large district, you know, it takes a long time to get from one end to the other of the third congressional district. So, all politics is local, right? And I'd like to start meeting people in Guilford, who, who feel the same about, about this as I do, and want to build the Green Party.
Well, the first year we ran candidates for City Council in New London was 2001, 20 years ago. And I won't say the community of Green Party members is, has been static. It hasn't. People, you know, get old, they move, they die, they go back to being Democrats or unaffiliated. But, but it is true that there is a community there, and this kind of provides a sort of mutual support, that you don't feel like, none of us feel like we're just, you know, lone individuals, you know, fighting the big battles all on ours, you know, all by ourselves, without having supporters with us. You know, whenever the New London Greens submit an opinion piece to the local newspaper, it's always signed by at least three members, and not always the same three, but, you know, it's kind of written by a group, and then we figure out who's, who's going to have their name on it, of the 10 people who provided input.
Yeah.
It's kind of, I can't imagine what it would be like to be starting out anymore. So, I guess now is a good time to talk more. Are there any other local issues, I mean, that you feel you can bring to this, you know, first, to this Board of Selectmen race?
Well, you know, I think one, one issue that I have long been personally interested in, and I would like to kind of bring to more prominence if I were on the Board of Selectmen, is that of clean energy. And the things that the town could do to speed up its adoption, both by town facilities and by residents. You know, I, I drive an electric car, I've, I've seen the number of chargers really not change much, anywhere. And, you know, I've, I, whenever I see a house with solar panels, I'm like, great, it's another house with solar panels. And I've seen that number increase a little bit over time. But, you know, the, the town should be leading the way. There should be solar panels going up on town buildings, and, you know, there's, you know, there's, there's different models of how we could maybe get the town's energy to be cleaner. But we should be pushing, we should exploring, be exploring those and pushing those. Some towns in Connecticut have municipal utilities. Why couldn't, maybe Guilford could have its own municipal utility, and we could generate our own energy, use it for the town facilities, use it for, for residents. Maybe residents could buy energy. I mean, that's, that's not crazy, that's, that's kind of a...
Well, Watten, right across the river from us, is one of those Connecticut towns with its own utility. And I'll tell you, after emergencies, you know, where there are big power outages, it seems as though they get their power back up quicker than other places, places that are under the, you know, for-profit energy providers.
Yeah, I think people appreciate the value of, of having some independence from the massive grid. I mean, we all kind of depended on it in some ways, on the internet and so forth. But, you know, with energy, you know, distribution of energy production has a lot of advantages in terms of resilience. And, and also, you know, the sun is everywhere, and the wind is everywhere. I mean, it's greater in some places, and there's tree coverage issues and things. But, you know, I'd really like, you know, the, the climate issue is, is, has been urgent for, you know, a couple decades. And the pace of our response to that has been inadequate on most local, state, and national levels. So, you know, and so anything you can do anywhere is, is worth doing, and is important. I don't want to, I don't want to raise people's taxes to do this. I'd like to find ways that we can do it, and maybe save people money. I mean, our, our energy is very expensive in...
It is.
In Connecticut. You know, and maybe we can save money by, by, by generating our own electricity in town. You know, I've seen the taxes go up every year while I've lived in town. You know, it occurred to me, you know, you know, racial inclusiveness and diversity is important, but economic diversity and inclusiveness is important, too. Right? I mean, what does Guilford want to be? Do we want to keep on becoming a more and more expensive place to live, and making it less and less accessible to people who don't, with less money? Or, you know, do we want a, do we want a town that is accessible to a variety of people of economic backgrounds?
And the people of the lower economic backgrounds are sometimes the people who are providing services to those in the community, those who are doing childcare, and elder care, and, you know, working in retail and service industries, and then they can't even live in the town where they work.
Yeah. And I, I see that as, you know, potentially, something that the kids are missing out on, if they grow up in a, in a town that's kind of economically exclusive. And then, they're not really growing up with real-world experience about the, about, you know, about the variety of challenges that people face economically. And I think that really skews the worldview. And, I mean, you know, you want your kids to grow up with a sense of, of, you know, not just what it's like to, to be, to have things easy. I mean, I don't want to oversimplify this. I mean, just because you grow up in Guilford, doesn't mean everything is easy. But, you know, we tend to have a higher average income than the average town. And, you know, I think that's, you know, that's something that, you know, I'm not sure how's, that may be a bit of a different perspective than some of the other, particularly perhaps the Democratic representatives, some in town, I don't know. All I know is that I have seen our, our tax rates creep up, year after year after year, for the almost 20 years I've been living there. And I do worry about that, what that can do in the long run.
Well, and like New London, of course, Guilford is a shoreline community, so, you know, sea level rise, and like stormwater, there, there are things that can really impact us if we don't plan ahead.
Absolutely. Climate change is, is really a lot more urgent than, than kind of we, than we are forced to confront in our day-to-day lives. You know, it's, it's really, and a, and a great cost. It's a cost, you know, economic cost, that we're going to have to pay in the future, that we don't have to pay right now. But we're much smarter if we put, make an upfront investment now, to deal with it.
Well, we have about five minutes left, so...
That's full buy.
Yeah, so what I'm going to ask you to do is, you know, tell people how they can learn more about your campaign, either, you know, your ongoing, to be continued, federal campaign, and your current local campaign, you know, how people can volunteer, or, and ways that people can get involved in, like, political activity in your town.
Yeah, well, you know, my website for, that I started for my congressional campaign is called JustinForAll.org, with a four, JustinForAll, Play on Justice for All.
Oh, yeah, and it's actually up there, so...
Oh, great. So, if you go there, you can contact me. I also have a Facebook page of the same name, and so you can message me there, or you can write, I mean, email Justin@JustinForAll.org, and reach out. You know, yeah, I'm looking for other people of similar mindset, and I know they're out there. I saw the Bernie Revolution sweep the country. I saw huge numbers of people who are passionate about wanting similar changes that I want. And, but a lot of people are feeling like, well, maybe this can only happen through the two-party system. And, you know, with ranked-choice voting, where you get to rank your choices on the ballot, and the last place candidate is eliminated, and then your vote goes to your second choice, that system has the, has the power to end, the spoiler effect, end the two-party system. that system has the, has the power to end the spoiler effect, end the two-party system. It's that particular reform, and, you know, Andrew Yang has come to this realization. The American Academy of Arts and Sciences, or the American Academy of Sciences, I think, has come to this conclusion that we need ranked-choice voting to make our political system better and more representative. So, I encourage people to, you know, I'm optimistic that we can get there, we can have a multi-party representative democracy. And, you know, if anybody who feels that way, I encourage you to, you know, I'd be happy to talk more about this with anybody who's interested. I've started a Guilford Greens website on Facebook, because we have the iconic beautiful Guilford Green.
Oh, yeah, it's perfect.
So, it's kind of the perfect, perfect name for the Guilford Green Party. And I found a beautiful picture of the green to put on our Facebook page. It just, just started, because this is, you know, a new direction that I'm trying to get people moving in.
And, and you're running for Board of Selectmen is almost certain to garner enough support that you could form a town committee in Guilford if you want. Right now, New London and Wyndham, I believe, are the only Green Party town committees. And there are some advantages in terms of official status. You know, if the other town, town committee chairs, the Democrats and the Republicans are informed about some event, whether it's, you know, checking the tabulators, or, or any kind of other official things, the Green Party has to be informed as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I've seen the success of the Green Party here in New London, and Wyndham in particular, Clinton, and really has been inspired to see, you know, once you kind of get the ball rolling and you get a few good people together who are committed and interested in, in advancing, you know, uncorrupt, this non-corrupt political party with, that values people, planet, peace, you know, people, it's kind of the, it's the Bernie Sanders values, but, but an independent party that believes in these things from the top down, the national party, state, local party, it's in the platform, and we're fighting for these values unapologetically, and, you know, without compromise. And, you know, when you fight for them, you know, there's a chance, you know, we can start to really move the needle, I hope.
Well, thank you, Justin.